I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Carney is absent.
Actually, I just walked in. Sorry.
Commissioner Carney. Commissioner Gerard.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner Salzweig.
Here.
Commissioners Anstra.
Here.
Chair Hanley is absent, and Vice Chair Kellwater.
Here.
Motion for...
I like a motion to accept her being here next chair.
Approval of the agenda?
I'm hopeful approval of the agenda is presented.
Are we actually going to switch those A and B around?
Oh, I am. We're going to switch a new business, A and B. We're going to switch them around.
Okay.
I forgot to say that. Okay, approval of the minutes for March 9.
I'll second the motion to accept the meeting.
Oh, second and change? All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? So now we can go to number three, right? Approval of the minutes for previous meeting, March 9.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to public comments, and those from the agenda, any comment? Doesn't look like it, so we can close that. Old business? Nothing on there? Okay, new business, commercial wireless communication towers. Sounds like we're changing a few things. This is Andy, guys.
This is Andy Showall, man.
That's where I was going.
So, yeah, there's been some discussions about modifying the city's existing standards for commercial wireless communication towers, primarily cell towers, but obviously those can be used for other purposes. Apparently, the city has a couple of those, and there are some regulations there that govern those. However, in light of some recent legislative changes to the zoning enabling act, we take a look at this, and we're suggesting a number of changes to this section of the ordinance here. So I'll just kind of go through what we've done here. I sort of summarized everything that we've done really quickly in the governmental that I sent. The actual ordinance itself would replace all of the language that's in there currently right now in Section 1704, subsection B E. And so, all this kind of go through kind of point by point, if that's okay with everybody, what we're thinking about. First section, purpose and intent, is just something that sort of establishes, you know, why we're doing this and what the intent of regulations are. Obviously, it's important that we cite commercial wireless communication towers properly. There are some height issues that would come into effect with regard to airport and things like that, and so we need to make sure that we're being careful. And in subsections two and three, is really where the law requires this is. Subsection two allows for administratively approved uses. What this primarily gets at is co-location of an antenna on an existing tower. So what happens normally is that most cell carriers don't want to do these things if they don't have to. They like to co-locate if they can, and so this makes it easy for them to do that. And I believe that the law now requires us to allow a co-location if the tower can handle it, obviously. So, in this, in the subsection two here, there's A and B. In my experience so far, primarily A has been where this comes into play, where there is an existing tower that's 150 feet or 200 feet tall. Most of these towers are designed to handle multiple antennas, usually. So this will allow, if there's one, if there's a tower built that has one antenna on it, and then a carrier comes on and wants to install an antenna, that can be approved administratively, so they don't have to come in for the planning commission to ask for a special, just for things like that. Subsection three really just sort of sets out, if you are going to construct a new tower, in addition to all of the information that's required for a special ant use and for a site plan, that they also submit the additional information that's listed here. And there's, oh, what about eight or so items here, most of it's, you know, pretty typical stuff that you would expect to see anybody's name and the operator, the folks who determined if co-location was feasible, engineer certifications, fencing, things like that. In subsection four, this is important. It says, once all required materials are submitted, the planning commission shall review the application and approve, approve with condition or denied within 60 days of receipt. That is actually something that's in the Michigan zoning enabling act. And I think they have a minimum of 90 days, which we could change. I put 60 days in here because I've seen a few other communities do 60 days. But you have to make that decision within 60 days. If you don't, then the application deemed approved. And that's an important thing to note as we review these things, assuming that we get more applications in. Number five, just, you know, basically requires that an applicant demonstrate that they know what their alternative for them to accomplish their objectives without building a new tower. Subsection six is general provision, and that's really all of the detailed standards that would regulate placement and construction of a tower. So in subsection six A, note that we've only, we're only going to permit these in the public facilities and in the industrial zoning district. This is a change. Currently, now, I think they're only allowed in industrial, if I recall correctly. I don't think they're allowed in the public facilities district now. And it's obviously to allow the city to erect a communications tower for municipal services, if that was something that was important. Subsection B requires all the setbacks to be met, and also that there is a, that the tower can't be any closer to the property line than what the fall zone would be. So if you have a 150-foot tower, you've got to have 150-foot radius of overall that tower in case it tips over and its base. My experience, that's, does not happen frequently, but, you know, I've seen pictures of these things when they pop over some treatment, so it is possible, I suppose. And then we also have a 200-foot isolation radius from any residence, so an actual building that's used as a residence, or 200 feet from any zoning district that does not permit them. And we can discuss those isolation radii. If you guys are not comfortable with those, they can be changed. That's not something that's mandated to be in that number. It's just what I came up with for this purpose. Subsection C requires proposed towers more than 35 feet in height to be submitted to the Michigan Air and Nax Commission FAA. They obviously have plenty of authority with regard to these things, and if they, they can, I think they can review and approve these things, and so it will be important for the city to receive that information from the applicant and from the reviewing agency, whoever that is. Subsection D basically just required that the service building be built and be reasonably compatible with existing in the area. Again, that's a very common provision. Most carriers or companies that want to build these do that anyway. They just build a simple, you know, brick wall-like building that with a little pitch roof on it. It looks fine typically. Subsection E requires that if there's any connective wiring, that they be underground. Subsection F, I think, is something that's, it's not, I don't recall if it's specifically spelled out in your ordinance, but I'm spelling it out here, that we're only interested in monopole towers, which is just the one straight tower, and there's not anything with the guide wires that go out on angle that takes up a great deal of space. G allows the planning commission to require landscaping. It doesn't require you to, but you may if you're so inclined, if there's, you know, if for some reason it's, you know, the building would be easily visible from someplace where you don't think it would be appropriate, you can install some landscaping. And in my experience, carriers haven't resisted that kind of requirement very much. You ask them to plant some sub bushes or something, they've generally been willing to do that. H prohibits any kind of strobe lighting unless the FAA requires them to install it. Subsection I does not allow any signage at all, except for something that's, you know, at the base of a tower that's not more than two square feet in area. J requires fencing and lock the gate, which again is very common. K requires that applicant certify its intent to lease excess space, if there is some. So if there's two or three extra spaces, then they assign something that says, yes, we would be willing to accommodate some other antenna or satellite carrier. Subsection L limits the height of a tower to 199 feet, which is chosen on purpose because when you get to 200 feet or taller, then there are additional FAA regulations that come in pertaining to lighting and things like that, which we're trying to avoid, obviously, in this case. And then M, I also included here that towers be at least a half mile from any other existing towers, unless it's something that's dedicated to essential municipal services. So, you know, please fire something like that if they want to build a tower that's less than half mile from a commercial tower like over Eisen Towers, and they would be able to do that. The remainder of this ordinance here is pretty straightforward. It's pretty common provision. Subsection M, or I'm sorry, subsection seven here requires that if a tower is unused for 12 months, that it be removed. A requires bonding, like a letter of credit or something. Subsection nine, you know, allows for pre-existing towers that were made non-conforming by these regulations. It allows them to continue with damage, which is a very common condition you see throughout the ordinance when it comes to non-conforming buildings or non-conforming signs. Whatever we change the regulation to make an existing building or structure non-conforming, we want to allow those to continue. And then, the subsection B under there, if a tower gets destroyed, or if it gets damaged, then they can't put it back up except under compliance with this ordinance. So, that pretty much sums up what they have, sums up what I have. I don't forget that any questions specifically, or any edits to this that you would like to see moving forward. As far as the process goes, since this is a zoning amendment, the planning commission will leave the schedule of public hearing on this at some point, then you ultimately may make a recommendation to the city council.
So now we should probably, like, look at scheduling a hearing for it?
Yeah, so I'd like to do so.
Is everybody comfortable?
I have a question on the, what's the 200, where does that come from? The 200 feet from any residence?
Typically, the 200 feet is the upper limit on the height of a tower. And so, again, that, you're talking about subsection B.
B, sorry, 6B, like, away from a residence, is that pretty typical of what you've seen before?
Yeah, and I think that's there again because if it's, yeah, I mean, if you're within 200 feet of a residence, usually these towers fall within ranges less than 200 feet.
Oh, I see.
And so you don't want it to fall around somebody's house, so that's where that's there.
Okay.
I have a question. It's probably a lack of understanding on my part, but in section 3G, the requirement that the applicant take it, I guess, find out the existing towers, structures and all that. That, what I don't understand, I guess, is who owns the towers and where are the applicants? I presume, based on your discussion, that there's typically a different owner for the tower versus those who want to place antennas.
Yeah, I mean, usually the tower is, you know, there's, in a lot of cases, there's somebody owns the property, and then they lease some part of that property to a company that wants to build the tower. Sometimes it's Verizon, usually it's somebody else, or it is Verizon. Once they build it, they usually just sell it to somebody else anyways, and they just lease it back to them. So, the name and address, and again, I've done a couple of these recently. Usually, there's a third-party firm that prepares the applications and then submits them on behalf of Verizon or something like that. So Verizon, or whoever it would be, typically hires somebody to prepare the application. So in that case, they would be the applicant.
So I guess my real question then is, how does the applicant know if the tower can hold their antenna or not?
Or...
Yes, based on a, because, you know, the tower may have been there for several years. There may have been some deterioration. So I'm wondering, is there an auditing process, or some review, or inspecting process?
The tower that's here in town, I was telling you that, sorry. I was on the commission when that was approved, and it was approved for five dishes based on structural engineers' recommendation for that particular tower.
So every tower probably comes with a set.
I would assume that.
With a set number, so it'd be sizable, basically.
Right. Well, whatever the engineer says. You know engineers, they...
Well, I am one.
In my experience, like Tim said, the tower is designed for a certain number of antennas. So there's, if there's, if it only accommodates three, then they can't load it up with seven of them or something. It would weigh the dump. And so that's something, in the application materials, they need to, you know, tell us how many antenna can fit on there. So we know moving forward, you know, if it's, we want to minimize the number of these things we have in the city. It's important for us to allow for co-location, to encourage that, and to hopefully encourage the people that are building them to have space on them for other carriers as they come onboard. And right now, there's only, as far as the cell carriers around here, there's only a few anyways. You know, get Verizon and, you know, Sprint and AT&amp;T or something. There's not a bunch. So typically, I haven't come across something that I could think of where, you know, where there hasn't been space. And usually they're, you know, they don't want to build these either because they're expensive. They cost several hundred thousand dollars to build, so if they cannot build them, they will not build them because they just want the antenna.
There's a section that I see here that says, considering the public health and safety. I understand the safety part, but has there been a study done for public health of people living near and around these towers, or anything like that part of it? So what's the health part?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I've read some studies that have looked at that, and, you know, they examined health, you know, issues from people that live near them. And based on what I've read so far, which, you know, I've been studying this for hours now, but I've read a couple of reports, and they couldn't find any strong correlation between, you know, that having a direct, you know, having a direct impact on somebody's home, that's like a renovation type of thing. That's not to say it's totally not true, but I haven't read anything that really substantiates that.
Subsection 6M, is that from all existing towers or ones that have additional space?
It would be from any tower.
Okay.
And again, the intent of subsection M is to not preclude the city from building an essential tower for their services if they need to do it. If there's one close by, and they need to build a tower anyways, to accommodate antenna for police and fire and emergency services and things like that, communications for anything else. I think it's important that we have that, have that ability for them to build one.
With the limitation of towers within a half-mile radius unless it's municipal, what does that allow us to possibly have in our fair city? I think we have four today, if I looked on the map right, that was right in the city.
I don't know. I have to check. I don't know if there could be a lot more like that. I haven't done...
I didn't think so either, but...
I have to check the map. We'll obviously...
Google's...
I somewhat have to know.
We have a current tower located up on Shepherd Drive, which is the municipal tower for the police. There is the current tower located downtown, which is for sale and soon to be coming out, located right from here. And then the third tower is located out by the border, so I have a couple of those. Couple proposed sites possibly would be the Public Works Complex for the Police, Fire Department, and DPWR, and then another one would be the water tower located up on T Drive. So those are two possible sites that would be recommended.
Is there anything located on that water tower today?
No, there isn't.
Although they tried.
Okay.
And it was turned down by the mayor.
And the reason for this is, I don't know if any of you are aware, but in 2017, the home carriers are not required to carry a landline anymore. So there's going to be increased demand for cellular devices and voice-over-internet protocol, which kind of prompted this re-writing of the ordinance. The demand's going to go up.
Any other questions? So should we hold a, set a public hearing in June?
Sure. I see no reason not to.
Motion to do that, or what?
We need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. So we're good for that in June?
All for a vote.
Oh, yeah, that's right. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Now we got a site plan review revision for administrative review. Does Andy have stuff for that, too?
This is a change that I suggested a month or two ago, and the reason for this is that over the last few months, we've had several applications for a site plan review that have come through here and been approved, where someone is basically just reusing an existing building. It's just a new tenant moving into a, to a commercial building, a few interior modifications. Nothing is being changed on the inside, but since it is a change of use, the ordinance requires that a site plan be reviewed and approved by the planning commission for, like, the start. The fact that the city reviews those is good, although I felt that, you know, having somebody wait four, six, or seven weeks for a planning commission meeting or something like this seemed to be a bit unnecessary. And so what I've proposed here in this amendment is that we allow instances where the proposed use is a use by right in the zoning district that is located, and if there's no additions or alterations or exterior changes to the building, that we allow the enforcement officer to be approving, or to be the reviewing body for those instances. So basically, what we're allowing for is administrative approval for site plans, where they're not really changing anything on the outside of the building. They're not building any sort of addition, or, you know, making some major changes like that. Recent examples would be the, what is it, the old Huntington Bank that became the Lowell Chirac Park. It was one...
Main Street Barbecue.
Yep, yeah, Main Street Barbecue. There was one other one, too, that I can't...
And that little grocery store.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Restaurant, whatever you needed to...
Yeah, exactly. You know, those are all instances where the building wasn't being changed at all on the outside. The use was changing, so it was important to look at things like parking and, you know, maybe landscaping and things like that, to make sure that it was still in compliance with the ordinance. But it didn't seem like it made a lot of sense to make them wait a month or more for a site plan review that was, you know, virtually guaranteed to be approved anyways. In that instance, I think it makes sense to allow the city administratively to work with those individuals so that they can kind of get movement faster, and the city is still ensuring that they meet the standards of the public zoning ordinance. You'll see under the subsection C here that this isn't, you know, something that's just going to be like a rubber stamp, the zoning enforcement officer may say that with conditions of approval. They may request additional information to assist them in making sure that does meet the standards of the ordinance. And then, subsection C3, there is just kind of a section that says, if we're not sure what they're doing, or it's kind of, it's getting too complicated, or, you know, something like that, and the city feels that you guys should take a look at it, then they can refer to the planning commission for a full review and approval, as outlined in the ordinance. That's basically the long and short of it, so if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Would those include signage?
Uh, yeah, I would. Yeah, I mean, typically, signs are approved administratively anyways. I mean, often, they come in as a part of the site plan, but sometimes they don't. Sometimes they ask for a sign permit a month later, or two months later after they've been through here. And that's something that's soon, and I usually work on to make sure that they do meet the standards of the ordinance and, you know, before they build anything.
Sounds okay. Now, do we want to hold a public hearing in June with that one also? Or should we skip it to July? Do we do two at one? Okay. So, should we do that in June? Everybody in favor of that?
Yes.
For a motion?
Reading a motion.
Yeah, I have that.
I make a motion to hold a public hearing, and we're agreeing that we're going to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Now we got a presentation regarding gravel.
Yeah, I'm plugged in, so I think it should work. I'll stop for a second. There it is. All right, so, this is a fairly short presentation that I put together for you guys. Just to give you some background on natural resource extraction mining, I think in New Orleans. It's called removal of sand, rock, topsoil, gravel, things of that nature. This is something that's, locally, it's been in the news a bit, and, you know, here in the city, there's some potential future mining activity that might take place. And so, before any of that comes in here, I just thought it would be useful to you, for you guys to learn a bit about this, because there are some sort of special consideration and special regulations and things that we need to sort of think about with regard to natural resource extraction. So, a little bit of background, from a legal standpoint, and I talked with the city attorney about this. Mining has long had a fairly preferential status with respect to zoning in Michigan. This goes all the way back to 1982. There was a case called Zulma v. Ada Township, and that was a really important case in which the court ruled that zoning regulations that prevent the extraction of natural resources are invalid unless it would very serious consequences would result from the proposed extraction. And they went on to list out what some of those serious consequences might be, and we'll get to that in a minute. And then, that was kind of the way it was for a long time. And the basis for that decision, I think, in 1982, and what's important to think about with regard to mining, is it's kind of unique in that you can only get it where it is in the ground, right? If we're talking about residential uses or commercial uses, the city, as they feel is appropriate, can kind of zone for those things, kind of however they want. But since you can only get, you know, gravel from places that there is gravel in the earth or sand from where there's the right kind of sand that would be used for mining, there's a bit of a preference there because there are only certain places where you can get it regardless of zoning. And so this was the rule for quite a long time, until 2010. There was a case that made quite a few headlines, Kaiser v. Cathon Township. Cathon Township is in Lea, Lona County, if I'm not mistaken, on your Traverse City. And they, what happened in this case, a very short version of it, was that Cathon Township did a whole lot of research, figured out where kind of the prime mining areas were in the township based on some studies and geological research they had done. Then they actually created a mining district. And so there was an area, they said, if... And so there was an area, they said, if, if you want to mine, we've done a bunch of research that says mining is allowed right here. And so they created a, a district for that. The person who had a parcel just on the outside of that district, of course, you know, sued the township and it went all the way to the Michigan Supreme Court. And that's when this Silva v. Ada Township rule was overturned. And there was a, a bunch of things that came into play there, but what was interesting was that that that, that decision established that mineral resource extraction decisions should be treated, that should be treated the same as anything else. And that was, you know, a lot of planners thought that was kind of a victory for planning because Kasten Township did do a great deal of planning and research and figured out what would be the best area for that. And they totally appropriated it, which is what you're supposed to do in planning. And then after that, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act was amended by the, by the legislature, assigned by the governor, and it basically threw the Kaiser versus Kasten Township thing right out the window. And it codified the Silva v. Ada Township into law, reestablishing this very serious consequences rule and restoring this preferential status that mining has in Michigan. And that's where we are currently. And so now the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act has a sentence, or a series of, it's a paragraph actually, that talks about that, and it specifically mentions the Silva v. Ada Township decision. And again, it says, "An ordinance shall not prevent the extraction by mining of valuable natural resources from any property unless very serious consequences would result from the extraction." And then it goes on to say that "In determining if very serious consequences would result, the following criteria may be considered." And so they give us a list of six bullets or six things that we can think about in determining whether or not there, they, there, there would be serious consequences. I'm not going to read all of these for you, but you can see they're, you know, kind of typical planning things in a lot of ways, the relationship, the relationship of mining with the existing uses, impact on existing uses, impact on property values, traffic, a lot of things that, that we think about anyways. And, you know, health, safety types of things. And so what that all means to me is that, well, first off, I should add that the act specifically says that a local municipal government is not prohibited from adding reasonable conditions or adding reasonable regulations for mining. So hours of operation, blasting hours, noise, dust control, traffic, haul routes, that kind of stuff can still be regulated. And so this also means to me that the city can, can continue to regulate mining using a special land use process, which is, which is what you use now. But I think it's important that if, if the planning commission is to make a decision either way on a, on any mining operation, or if they are going to set conditions on, on the approval of a mining operation, that those conditions should address those very serious consequences, sorts of standards, or, or ensuring that we're making a defensible decision. Like I said, most communities, including Lowell Regulated Mining Operations, as a special land use, usually these things are permitted in fairly low-density rural areas. HAG is usually where they're permitted, where you have fairly large lots, forty or eighty acres or a hundred acres, very large parcels, where you can have generous setbacks. And fairly carefully plan out the haul routes and how they're going to work the site, and minimize the dust and the noise and, you know, other, other issues that kind of go along with that that a lot of the people that, that live near them don't like very much. So, currently in, in the city of Lowell, there's, I, I discovered in doing research for this over the last few weeks, that there's some kind of interesting situations that we're going to have to deal with if somebody does come in and ask for a special use permit to do some sort of natural resource extraction. This is a permitted use in the floodplain district and in the SR, which is suburban residential district. What concerns me most is this, the fact that it's permitted in the floodplain district, because in reading through the ordinance, the text of the ordinance refers to the floodplain district as an overlay. And you'll see on the map, whether it's the one I've got up there, the one on the wall behind me here, the floodplain district isn't shown as an overlay, it's shown as its own zoning district. It's, it's the, it's the lighter blue there you'll see in the south, very southeast portion of the city, and also on, over on the southeast part, there's kind of that, that light blue there. That is evidently supposed to be an overlay district according to the ordinance. And so the issue then is, if it's an overlay district, then that, you know, presumably then there's some other zoning district underneath that that we don't know what it is. That concerned me a bit because if, if the property underneath that overlay is, is zoned in such a manner that does not permit mining, which is likely, in, in my opinion, it looks like some of that land is probably zoned industrial, then you'd have an overlay that permits something that's not permitted in the zoning district underneath it. I'm not sure how that would be handled, but I, my, my first guess at interpreting that would be that it wouldn't be permitted. And that's kind of an unusual situation anyways. And then the other issue that goes along with this is that the floodplain district shown on the map does not, is really not even close to what the actual floodplain is in the city. And I looked up a map online from FEMA, and I was actually quite surprised at how extensive the floodplain is here. It's, I mean, we're in the floodplain right now if we were standing on the street. And it goes, I mean, it covers probably a thirty percent of the city or more. It's, it's, it's really, really big and certainly much more extensive than, than, than what is shown on there. So that's also an, an issue is that we're not even, you know, the, the map kind of shows that flood, that mining would only be allowed in these handful of parcels, when in reality mining would be allowed in a, in a great deal of the city. Would be, would make a lot of sense in most places because the city is, you know, pretty much built out already. But it is kind of a point of concern that it's, it's just kind of complicated and confusing that we have, you know, mining permitted in a district that's not accurately drawn currently, and we're not sure if the zoning that's underneath the floodplain would allow mining in the first place, even though it, it, it would be permitted in the overlay. In the ordinance, section seventeen point oh four C is the section that actually regulates mining. The standards there are fairly reasonable. You know, it's, it's, it's a little short, I guess, but it's, it's okay the way it is. But I think figuring out where exactly mining is permitted and how we deal with that is going to be one of the things that we'll need to be thinking about over the next few months. So, from the planning commission's perspective, what are the challenges? One of the biggest one is that there can be significant public opposition to mining activities. I've seen it in several instances. People don't like the noise, the trucks, the dust, a lot of the activities that go along with mining, like, you know, crushing of gravel and rocks. You know, the, the operation of the heavy equipment, the dust, the, you know, cutting down trees and, you know, destroying what people call, you know, they're destroying all kinds of things. There are drawn water concerns at times. Vibration, people worry about all the vibrations causing structural damage to their houses, things like that. There are a number of, you know, pretty major concerns that, that people, that people bring forward, and as you can see from that picture above, which is actually from Florida. People can and do organize and get very, I was going to say they're, they can be, be, be very motivated with things like this. A lot of the things that, that concern people can be addressed through the special land use process. So we can put conditions on it and approval that talk about haul routes and, you know, phasing, you know, the way the site is worked so they don't have a hundred acres all open at the same time. Maybe they have a smaller portion open and they kind of work the site in pieces as they, you know, move around to get it done. But nevertheless, you know, sometimes they can result in very large, very large crowds at planning commission or city council meetings. And it can be very controversial. Additional challenges, you know, one of them is that a lot of applicants propose that after the mining is done, there's going to be a pond or a lake left. And afterwards, they're going to develop, they're going to have these, you know, wonderful houses or condos or whatever, you know, this new lakefront property that they've created from, from the mining when it's done. That's okay, and that's worked before. There are numerous instances around here where there are, from all accounts, what appear to be successful popular developments that are on lakes that were formed by mining activities. But I think when you're looking at that, the city should be mindful of what his master plan says for that parcel, you know, the master plans look five, ten, twenty, thirty years in the future. And if someone is, is proposing to mine a site for ten years and then build houses on it, well, we should make sure that our master plan is, is supportive of that. And that it's, that it's consistent with, over the long term, this is eventually going to be some kind of residential use. Another challenge for the planning commission is that a lot of applicants offer some kind of timetable during the application process. They'll say, "I expect to mine the site for five years." "I'll be done in seven years." That's fine too, except for the fact that a lot of that stuff is obviously dependent on how quickly they can sell them to, the material that they're taking out of the site. A lot of it's used in the, in the construction industry for building of homes or roads or whatever. And so if there's not a demand for the sand or for the gravel or, or whatever, it can take much longer than they have originally estimated. And so the planning commission then may approve something with thinking that it's going to be a five-year operation. And then, you know, four and a half years then, the applicant comes into the wall, we're going to need another five years because this, things just haven't gone as fast as we thought. And those can, I think, can be difficult things to enforce if they're not met. Same thing with, with the idea of housing. The idea of housing or condos or something sounds great, but if someone was promising to build all kinds of creative condos and it was going to be done in 2008, it might not have worked out so well in the short term. And that's some, and again, that's something that's kind of driven by the marketplace, and it can be difficult to enforce those things if, if market forces sort of dictate that things haven't gone the way that they should. And so in, in the meantime, the city or the township or, or whatever is left with a kind of big hole in the ground for a while, waiting for the markets to, to turn around and to, you know, support new residential development. Another thing that is also important is just the restoration and reclamation of the site. Some, some operators don't propose to build a bunch of houses afterwards. They just say, "I'm going to mine the site, and then when I'm done, I'm done. I'll put it back, and that'll be that." But I have heard of instances with other clients where the guy said, "Yep, I'll put it back, no problem," and then when he's done mining, he just, you know, dusts off his hands and drives away, and township is then left with this giant hole in the ground that hasn't been graded or seeded or anything like that. Requiring a, a performance guarantee can certainly help with that, and it's, would be strongly recommended. So that if something like that does happen, that then the city can take it upon themselves to restore the site in a manner that's compliant with the zoning ordinance. And then, and they could use a performance bond or a letter of credit or whatever it would be to pay for that, so it doesn't directly come out of the city's pocket. So that's pretty much it for now. I'll turn it over to you, which is chairman, if you have any questions or if anyone else does. I'd be happy to answer them for you.
No, I'm, what is the layers of zoning?
You're talking about the overlay?
Yeah, overlay.
Yeah. So in, in zoning, a, a fairly common technique is to use something called an overlay. And so you have the map, like what we have behind us here. And so if we imagine, well, it, it, it's, it's not fake, but if we, so typically you, you divide your city up into different zones, and then each, each zone has got specific standards as far as what kind of land uses can be done in that zone. An overlay is something where there's some sort of special characteristic about a certain area that, that you feel warrants additional regulation beyond what is offered by the underlying zoning district. And the floodplain is a prime example of that. You know, so obviously with, with the floodplain, you want buildings to be built at a certain elevation, for example, to, to allow for people to purchase flood insurance at a reasonable rate and to minimize the likelihood that during a flood, buildings would get destroyed and things like that. We also see, commonly see overlays for, you know, key highways or key commercial corridors where there are increased setback requirements and things like that. I mean, there are overlays that address all kinds of, all kinds of issues, but basically the idea is that there's, there's something, you, you, there's something unique about an area that warrants additional consideration. So you would have an overlay that has one set of regulations that address a certain topic. So in this case, with, with a floodplain overlay, you, the floodplain overlay has a bunch of standards that are, are meant to minimize flood damage and flood risk and flood hazard. That overlay then is in addition to everything that's underneath it. And a flood, an overlay doesn't have to follow any other particular zoning district boundaries if it doesn't need to. So in the case of the floodplain overlay, it would go over industrial zoning property, residential property, the downtown, which is commercially zoned, mixed use. Almost every district in the city, I think, probably has some sort of, you know, floodplain spot at some point or another. So that's, that's the idea with overlays.
Haven't we had gravel mining in the city before?
Uh, no, Mark.
We have it right now.
Various gravel pit?
And Stone Lake said, take it from there.
That's still not active, is it?
Not for many, many years.
Does Grand Rapids gravel still own some of that? Yes.
Yes.
They have a spot right by Walgreens, don't they?
Yes.
And I think you may see a proposal coming to you or someone.
They own all the way from the existing water treatment plant, property, all the way to.
So we don't have to do anything with that, right?
No, we're just, you know, anticipating that there might be something coming to you. We wanted to just do some general education mining before we got to that point, so you had to see that, and start thinking about it. Take a look at the ordinance. If you have any questions or anything you want us to research, a lot of stone, you know, we can check things out for you as well. We wanted to do that before we were actually steering the proposal. You asked, oh, steering the base, we wanted to get that education out there for you.
Do you know how long it took them to finish Stone Lake site?
That's a good question. Yeah, I'm looking at the audience.
I'm going to guess at least twenty-five years. It was a long time.
It was a long time.
And Grand Rapids gravel also owns the property at Plainfield and Five Mile. And that's been under development for forty years. And they've only been building, like the golf course and some condos, maybe the last fifteen years. So these things can go on for an eternity. Or longer.
Yeah, it is very long. This is when I was young, it was happening.
Okay, we all good with that, or? Move on to staff report.
Um, a couple of items to add. I mean, the, the report is in your packet in terms of it permits the issue this year. Your June meeting is going to be fairly busy. You've got a couple of public hearings that you just scheduled, and we also will be bringing to you a rezoning of several parcels as, as a combination. One is where we've just been going through the map and trying to clean up the zoning map, and there are several parcels that are not zoned currently public facilities that need to be rezoned public facilities. So we have that group that will be coming to you. Snyder Banner is looking at adding to their facility, and so that would, that would, one of the lots that they purchased that would require a rezoning, and so it would be adding that to the, the group as well. And then there's a residential property in Bullish, both that's currently zoned as C2. It's the area's future land use plan for mixed use, but I think we're going to recommend that we zone it to R2, which it was zoned R2 at one point in time. We're not sure why I want to C2, but anyway. The, the concern there is a sort of larger concern throughout the city. Some we talked about during the. Something we talked about during the mixed use process is that if you have a residential property that's in a commercial district, if it's destroyed, or more than sixty percent of it is destroyed by fire or through, you know, some means, then it cannot be rebuilt as a residential property that's in a C two or in a commercial district. There are areas where you want that to occur, but areas where your future land is an excuse, you know, it would be, I think, okay to rebuild that as a residential house. What happens is that when those houses come up for sale and the banks see that, the banks refuse to own money because they're taking this risk that if a house burns down, then it could never be rebuilt. And so, banks tend to slow the process down in terms of those housing sales. So, that's one that we said that we would just add to the rezoning, to the future meeting. And then the other two, if you have any questions on that now, or if you want me to look at it, I can answer those, or feel free to get ahold of me between meetings if you have anything. The last two things are, had to do with a couple of people that have taken every opportunity and they can to do this, but, I mean, he's shaking his head, but sitting in the audience is Dan this morning. And Dan is the Public Works Director for four days. And he will, his last day with the city will be May fifteenth, and he is retiring after thirty-three years here. And I just wanted to say to this group that Dan has been just a wonderful, wonderful member of the leadership team. He's been a great assistance to me as a new city manager, and he's, in fact, he's just been a great, great leader and done a wonderful job for this city, and so, he should be congratulated for that. Maybe we can embarrass him by, you know, around. There will be an open house reception for honoring Dan. He wouldn't let us do a dinner, but we talked to him, he entered the hall, he was to do a reception. It'll be on Thursday at the Chamber from four to seven, and you are all invited. We encourage you to stay by and wish Dan congratulations on his retirement on Thursday from four to seven. And then also sitting in the audience is Rod Woods. Rod is the interim Public Works Director. Rod comes to us from the, retired from the city of Kentwood. He retired in December, I think, of last year. And we've gone through a process to hire a new DPW director, offered a gentleman the position, and he accepted, he turned in his reservation, and the city manager and mayor and his community sat down with him and offered him more money and dunked a bunch of money into his retirement. And so, he had to call back and decline. And then, one of the other candidates that we were looking at, his family situation had changed, and so, he couldn't accept the position. And so, I had heard that Rod is out there, and so, had some conversations with him before he ended his interim, and we're certainly honored to have him here and somebody with his experience. He's, has a master's degree in engineering, some type of engineering. He's always was an engineer. They're okay. And civil engineer from the University of Michigan-Copeland. And he also spent quite a few years with DEQ and basically built a public works department for the city of Kentwood from the ground up. They were with, contracting with Kent County Public Works for a while before he was there. So, we're happy to have Rod on board, and please feel free to introduce yourself to him, and I'm sure you'll see him out on the streets and know him, surround him for me. And that's all for you.
Okay. Commissioner remarks?
Not for the group. Jim?
Just want to apologize for being late.
Long day.
Long day at work.
Now, we just need a motion.
How much do you agree?
Support, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
DNA?